This is the first super merger, I hope you can all see it. It was three funds into one at one minute to midnight on the 30th of June last year. The furniture industry, pulp and paper industry fund and timber industry fund to form. It's now about 80,000 members, but I think the funds under management number might be struggling a little against that number from last year. Essentially, it's the forestry industries and everything that comes from the forestry industries. What I want to run through today is just to talk you through planning, execution and wash up, tell you a couple of stories along the way and hopefully share with you some of the learnings of that exercise. On the understanding that I in fact was a director of one of these funds for most of the time in the lead up and only came on board as CEO on the 10th of June, so I had about two weeks to sort of see it through. And I have got a number of things to share with you, but it was interesting last night at dinner, I was sitting next to a trustee who started to talk to me about mergers and what was it like and started to get into the detail of yeah, but how do you merge your investments and what do you do about custodians and that sort of stuff? And I found myself very quickly saying, and I'm sure Jared at least will repeat this, that at the end of the day, it's not about any of that. It's about whether or not two boards and CEOs and management actually want to do it and are committed to do it and believe that a merger will be in the best interests of members. And at the end of the day, that's all it's about. All the other stuff is just working out how to get to the end result. And I can remember on Christmas, so it must have been Christmas 2007, I was in a bar having a drink with Gary Wavens, which some of you would find hard to believe, but we were. And he said, well, how are the mergers going? Because we had the two going side by side. And I said, oh, they're looking okay, you know, we've got a few problems, but they're looking okay. And I'll never forget Gary said to me, well, that's good, but it'll only take one person to bring it unstuck. And along the journey, there were times when there, not so much in this experience, but perhaps Gerald will touch on, there were times where you would look at it and say, gee, there is one or two people who are going to bring this unstuck. Anyway, because I've got limited time, I'll quickly go through it. First phase of the planning, as I said, people really need to have a clear sense of what are you trying to achieve with a merger? And fundamentally, it is that it's got to be better for the members. If it's, if there's not going to be a better outcome for members, don't bother. Our boards, the three boards, fortunately, the same union appointed the member representatives to edge the three boards, so that made it a bit easier. But the employers came from very diverse backgrounds, large international companies, small employer associations. All at the start had a really strong belief that this merger would deliver significantly improved benefits to members and they needed to keep that commitment. Secondly, in the planning phase is the amount of time that you allow. If you think that you can do a merger under 12 months, forget it. In my experience, 12 months is the minimum that you would need to allow. And the other point I'd say is that, and then it's 12 months after that before you can finally sit down and say, well, I think we've finished that. The third is obviously to set out the task list, task list clearly and be clear about what you need to do. And I think the other thing that we sensibly did very early on was board on board an independent consultant to help advise the three boards. In terms of the execution, it's the structure, it's the structure of how you go about executing a merger that is the most important thing. In our case, a steering committee was formed very early on. It had representation, employer and member reps from each of the three boards, so that was one of each from each of the three boards. But more importantly, the steering committee was empowered and given resources. So it was allowed to actually go and do things and it was allowed to do things like hire consultants. And it was allowed to, you know, bring in expert advice where it needed to bring in expert advice. And the funds had already agreed how they would share the costs of doing those things. But whilst the boards didn't at any stage give up their power to at the end say yes, we're in this or no, we're not, they didn't at any stage give up that power, they nevertheless let the steering committee get on with doing the work that was needed to be done. Our steering committee started in about July 2007 and it met fortnightly, almost without fail, including through January. And so that was the level of commitment that was required. What happened, and it had a very good long task list, you could imagine what it was. Early on, you had to decide who was going to be the successor fund or would there be a new fund. In our case, it was fairly straightforward. The successor fund was chosen as TIS because it was a public offer fund and the, at least one of the others were not. TIS already had things like pension products and so there were a number of good reasons why TIS was chosen as the successor fund. So that was an easy one, but it could have been a difficult one. Then people needed to get their heads around things like administrators, custodians, investment consultants, those sorts of service providers, and then work their way ever so slowly and carefully towards the composition of the board, the fund name and the logo. And those things took quite some time as well, and I won't bore you with the detail, but it is just a ticked list of things that need to be done. The focus of this conversation really was going to be on what was the impact on investments. I think what our experience showed was, as you work through the process, right up to, I'll tell you what we got done until December, we had decided by Christmas 2007, the fund name and the logo. We decided on administrator, a custodian, two very important things. We decided on a successor fund and early in January, decided on the size and composition of the board. But what tended to happen in the run up from January to June was that things started to separate into the list of things that absolutely had to be done by the 30th of June and things that gee, I'd like to get them done, but they can wait. And the investment stuff tended to be in that second list, because the things you had to get done was you had to get APRA approval for your licence, you had to have your administrator in place and your custodian in place. You had to get, in our case, 40,000 members across from two administration systems to another administration system. And you had to make sure that it worked and you had about four days to do that in the last week of June. You had to have an auditor appointed. So as I say, our experience was that whilst before the merger, clearly the investment options and the products were agreed, and I think I can give you a look at what that looked like, if you have a look at the shape of our funds, you'll see it was, it was pretty easy to fit the existing options into those options. Where we didn't get to, we started to, but we didn't get to was trying to rationalise managers. So the things that didn't get done was that this is the list that we started with and it didn't get pared down. And I don't know if you can see the numbers at the bottom, but on day one, we had 61 investments and 50 managers. And the steering committee and the boards had gone through some of the beauty parade exercises with some of the equity managers, but that's basically what we started with. Now, for a small fund, those are big numbers. And let me tell you, the day that Lehman Brothers went down, they became very big numbers because I needed to make 15 or 16 phone calls to just find out what our exposure was. So, and I can tell you that very quickly, after Lehman Brothers went down, we decided not to go the long road through rationalising managers. There was, I think I can fess up now, there was several hour session around the boardroom table at Frontier where we basically went through each of the asset classes, looked at the performance of various managers and said, we've got to rationalise this now so that we know where are our investments and we can manage the managers that we had. That then led to some phone calls to people who didn't particularly enjoy getting the phone calls. And I was trying to figure out, how do you, I'd never sacked a manager, how do you sort of sack a manager? That's a bit of a hard thing to do. And I hope the person's not in the room, I don't think so, but I worked out this terrific line, which was, it was September, mid-September. So I rang and I said, look, we're rationalising our managers, you know, Lehman's has really focused our minds on this, but we really need to get about this because we simply can't manage a small fund like us, this number of managers, this number of investments, some of which were, you know, countering each other in style and stuff. And I said, so I'm afraid, you know, that we're going to be exiting your investment. And there was a bit of quiet on the end of the line and I said, and let's face it, I've been here four months and I've never even met you, so it's not as if we've got a good fund manager relationship. And that line worked pretty well, I was able to use it about six more times. And so I would say, if I can go therefore to the lessons of going through, because I'm not sure how much time's going, but I'll push on. The things that we did really well was that we started with a clear agreement between all of the boards of what we were trying to achieve and that there would be benefit. We very quickly got an independent objective feasibility review. We had an empowered steering committee and they knew they had to work and they knew they had to work hard and they were disciplined about it. We had a good communication strategy, we kept APRA informed all along the way, we had informal or formal meetings with APRA. A very critical thing was to move all your assets of the three funds to the single custodian. I think we did it in May, so we had all of our assets moved across to the same custodian so that when we got to the 1st of July, then it was just really a matter of changing the names of the accounts. We kept the successor fund administrator, which in our case is self-administration. I think that's given us a way better outcome frankly than if we had have been one of the small funds of, you know, of 20 or 30 clients of an administrator, a major advantage. But things we would do differently, I've just explained, rationalising investments along the way. I think that the other thing you need to understand is that it takes a lot longer to rationalise investments in areas like setting up individual mandates, which is what a merger comes to bring you. Couple of other things to finish. We merged at one minute to midnight, the regulators couldn't give us any advice as to when to do it. Media Super merged one minute after midnight. That meant that we had really messy year end accounts, whereas if we had have done it one minute after midnight, we would have simply had three funds and then this year one fund. So I think we'd probably do that differently. And finally, I'd just say, the question is, is it worth it? And the answer, I think, for our fund is resoundingly yes. Our members have got much better benefits in terms of their investment choices, the ability of us to have more money into direct mandates, that sort of stuff, insurance benefits, service levels, our call centre, lower costs. So it was certainly worth the journey, but it will only take one person for self-interest or otherwise to stop you if that's a journey you're about to head off on. Thanks.
Thanks David and thanks Graham. As Graham mentioned, we share a spot on the Media Super board, so there's been a number of familiarities and you'll hear some of those things coming through in my talk with you. Now printers and journalists, it looks, it looked, I suppose, like a marriage made in heaven. But in fact, anybody who's been involved in our industry, the publishing industry would know that there's been at least a century of suspicion and crossing each other's picket lines and pinching each other's jobs. And so really the suggestion was, the suggestion is that it was more likely to be a relationship made in a rather hotter part of the cosmos rather than heaven. Over the past decade, Just Super, which was the fund representing journalists, but also actors as well, and Print Super, representing printers, but also people in the graphics art industry, had had two or three goes at getting into bed together. Now, each attempt in the previous goes had sort of founded at the Saturday night dance party when the chemistry hadn't quite clicked and so we didn't go home together. But this time, and we're now talking about late 2006, and so we're reflecting Graham's reference to, don't assume that it's going to take a year, it's going to take longer than that. In late 2006, we had another go. Curiously enough, it was actually one director from Print Super and myself who happened to be sharing a table at of all things, a family wedding in Bendigo in Victoria. And at the end of the second bottle of red, we reckoned that we could, well, he and I thought we could go to bed together if you follow my... This time around, we did, we achieved the unlikely, a genuine merger that didn't look like or feel like or smell like a takeover. And that's one of the problems that you get in unevenly sized funds seeking to merge. And so June 30th, 2008, and as Graham mentioned, strictly speaking, on the morning of July the 1st, 2008, the nuptials were completed. Now, this is what we looked like at that point. Looks relatively simple. Print Super over on the left, 1.4 billion, should be billion dollars, unless they haven't told me something. And over on the right, Just Super with close to a billion dollars and so a combination of about 110,000, 112,000 members and I'm not quite sure why we're so precise on that, 2.333 presumably recurring billion in funds under management. Relatively simple, yep. Well, in fact, like most important relationships that you expect or hope will endure, it was relatively complex and nuanced. To begin with, we were quite unlike, unalike as funds, even though we were relatively the same size, although not quite, as you can see there, and as anybody knows, in negotiations or in relationships, size matters. We had different fund managers in the main, less than 30% of fund managers were common and we had a lot of those. We had different custodians. Print Super had BNP Paribas and Just Super had NCS. We had different asset consultants, Mercer in the case of Print and Frontier in the case of Just. We had different insurers, ING for Just and Hanover and IUS for Print Super. We had different pricing regimes for members. Print used weekly unit pricing while Just used monthly crediting rates. And finally, we had different administrators. Pillar was the administrator for Print and Super Partners was Just's administrator. And actually, not quite finally, we also had different head officers. Print was mainly domiciled in Sydney while Just Super was mainly domiciled in Melbourne. And of course, one fund had to become the successor fund and go into the other and that caused some difficulty. So how did we do it? And what lessons did we learn that might be useful in passing on to others contemplating such matrimonial delights? Well, reflecting what Graham said, I would say that investments weren't high on the agenda when we first started dating. They probably should have been, but I knew that as the chair of one of the two funds who'd either been jilted or gone the brush off over the previous decade. Unless we sorted out a whole range of issues beforehand, we wouldn't have had to worry about the issues of merging and culling and reassembling our mutual portfolios, we'd be back on Single Street going out to bars and looking up the RSVP website. Now, a similar slide to the one you saw from Graham, this is what our investments and managers looked like at a minute past midnight on, in July the first 2008. There were 90 investments and there were 67 managers. You'll see there in terms of investment choice, there was a range of differing investment choices, so that there wasn't really an easy line up. I'll just run back there to the investments and managers. Graham's right, these things are easy to derail. You only require a single person on either the boards or at the senior level of management to insist that the net benefit to members is not there and the thing will slowly and then quickly unravel. That occurred about three times in a period of nine months as we sought to pull the whole exercise together after we had this wedding in Bendigo and so on, where we had spats and various differences of opinion about how we'd go about the process. And the trick there was to create a heads of agreement. It ended up being a dot point with 20 matters that were listed and we created a committee rather like the one that happened at First Super. And that committee was empowered by the board to negotiate the next step of the process so long as it stayed within that 20 dot points in the heads of agreement. And it required a lot of discipline to maintain that and as I say, there were about three points at which the whole thing looked like it was going to derail. The issues that we encountered, we had some tax problems. We sought to use a federal government initiative, which was a sort of window, a tax window in which we could carry forward capital gains tax advantages. But unfortunately, we were unable to meet the time deadline for that window and so we weren't able to use that benefit. Missing that window was unfortunate. It was a silly policy, the idea that you'd actually create a window for a thing like a fund merger and then close the window on it seemed to us to be ridiculous, but that's actually what occurred and we probably lost about a million dollars. With asset consultants, we thought we'd retain both asset consultants until after the merger, as a number of funds had done, but we soon realised that it wasn't going to be very sensible, so we went to tender before the merger took place. And that proved to be a pretty good outcome as there was no ambiguity about the advice we were receiving from our asset consultants. With custodians, we decided to do the same with custodians mainly because one director of one of the two funds got the heebie-jeebies about losing track of assets and so in the end, we just did a political deal with him and said, okay, we're going to have to hold that custodian and we'll go to tender after the process. And so in fact, BNP Paribas and also NCS took the various assets through to the point of June 30, but BNP was the continuing custodian. The cull, it's taken us more than a year to go through. We've got that number of 67 down, but it's only to 57. We spent most of the time thinking about strategic asset allocation, it wasn't exactly assisted by the wildly gyrating markets at the time. And then we reviewed the managers in each asset class in the light of that strategic review. Should we have acted more quickly? Well, it's a pretty slow process and we are in fact a long way off completing the culling and rebuilding process. Some of this has been because some assets have been more difficult to dispose of than others. You can see there, there's a large number of assets sitting in property and also in infrastructure, particularly in property and private equity that have proven to be difficult to realise. Graham mentioned Lehman Brothers, it wasn't only Lehman Brothers that was falling by the wayside at the time, you might recall AIG and Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae and a number of other organisations that were either about to hit the wall or did hit the wall. And we were in, we would have preferred to have liquidated a number of assets, a number of questionable assets earlier, but we were unable to do so and it was a problem for us. Unit pricing, call me old fashioned, but I don't like unit pricing. It seems like it's here to stay, I understand that, but I think it's rubbish that you need to mark to market a portfolio of assets weekly that the overwhelming majority of our 110,000 members are not going to realise for between 30 and 40 years. But that's a grumble for another day. What I can say is that aligning the two different unit pricing and crediting regimes meant that there was a switching blackout for about 20 days in July of 2008, which I must say, made our nervous nellies amongst the members very nervous indeed. You remember July 2008? In the end, fortunately, that blackout left a number of people who'd sought to switch mainly to cash. When we got to the end of that blackout period, we discovered that there was actually only about 20 people involved who were wanting to do that. Which brings me finally to the question, why did we do it? As the events of the previous decade had indicated, we had been to the church several times and then called it off, so why didn't we do the same when it became evident that the markets were so turbulent? The real answer is, I actually don't know. It may have been that old human emotion that you've got a lot of skin in the game after you've made the first decision and so you just press on. It may also have been that we were persuaded that there was a sweet spot that was beyond the $1 billion that Just Super had and $1.4 billion that Print Super had, but there's not much real scientific evidence about that. But that's probably one of the main factors that kept us going in the face of significant constraints. So finally, do we feel married? Yes, we do. It feels more efficient, we've kept APRA in the loop and they seem to be happy and it seems to have been well received by members. Did we save anything? Now, that's really hard to measure. We did get to the end of the process and a year later tried to measure it, there's probably about a million dollars in actual savings in the trustee structure, in the trustee office. And as a result of an insurance tender, we've probably benefited the members by about $10 million. But when you think 10 million out of 2.4 billion dollars, that's roughly 25 basis points. It's pretty hard to argue that that's the real reason that you'd be making one of these rather complex mergers, but we did it. Thank you.
In the first instance, I wanted to really look at the landscape that's out there and sort of how that landscape influences on the scope for mergers coming forward. I'm sure each of you rushed to the APRA website when the quarterly stats come out and tell you about the changes in the industry so that you can strategise about where you want to take your funds. But for the sake of this presentation, just to look at the most recent APRA stats that are out there and look at the number of funds and the decline that has happened over time. Leaving to the side the small funds, which are obviously a different case, over almost 13 years going back to, or going up to March 2009, the number of funds has fallen about 90%. So it's a pretty substantial decline in the number of funds. They've gone from about 4,700 at June 1996 to about 475 at the end of March. Fairly sobering numbers that tell you something about what's to come, continue to come in the future. Looking on a shorter time horizon, just over the last five years to the end of March, the number of funds has increased, sorry, has reduced about 30% from about 1,800 funds in June 2004 to again, 475 or so, March 2009. So they're the sort of stats that show you the scale of rationalisation that's gone in the industry that we work in. The government, the federal government, having released the capital gains tax relief, is making a very clear statement about how it wants, particularly in the current investment market environment, wants to encourage and facilitate the further rationalisation of funds. In our case, the most recent mergers, we'll look at the mergers in our own case in a moment, but the two most recent ones did leverage off the capital gains tax relief that the government launched and it was an incredibly material factor in the fact that those mergers proceeded. So it's good to say, I guess, in that case, that the government has had a favourable impact on these sorts of things happening. The other observation, I guess, about the landscape, which I think is worth noting, is that it's important to remember that the rationalisation of the superannuation industry does just not, does just not impact the funds themselves. It of course also affects the advisors to the industry. There are less funds, there are therefore less need for advisors to advise those reduced number of funds. So it's a very significant factor that pervades the whole industry and how it'll be structured going forward. Turning then to legal supers' experience with mergers. So in our case, going back a fair number of years since the early 2000s, we've had about seven mergers that have joined us, which on average is about one a year. So we've been pretty busy, at the risk of understatement. Our fund has increased from 2001 from about 150 million to 1.2 billion at the current date, so we've picked up another 1.1 billion since the earlier reference. So it's had an increase of an eightfold factor in fund. So we've been quite successful and in fact, those seven mergers have contributed 50% of the current fund that we now manage. So for us, merger has been a very important part of the fund as we now have it and how it's evolved over time. By way of observation, I think it's also significant to look at the fact that there are three corporate funds, there's quite a mix of different types of funds in these mergers. There's, as I say, three corporate ones. The first one, the Law Institute, was a corporate fund. And the third one is a corporate fund for a legal firm in Melbourne. And the Blake Dawson Fund is, I guess, in the form of a corporate style fund. One of the funds, the Law Industry Super Trust, number four, it was an industry fund for the New South Wales legal profession. And the three remaining funds, which are number two, number five and number seven were industry funds that had a focus on self-employed practitioners in the legal profession. So that's a sort of profile. So that's a sort of profile, I guess, if you like, of the funds that have merged with us and what sort of sector they've come from. Turning to the, because the number of funds, I haven't been able to show you every level of detail here, but this sort of gives you a snapshot of before all these mergers started, what sort of number of managers we had before all these mergers started, and then what number we had after all these mergers had been implemented. So as you can see, the total number of investment managers substantially increased, as you would expect with the growth in the fund. I guess the standout sort of changes for me are the, and this is often a reason that is talked about in terms of a larger fund can more diversify its investments and access other sectors, other asset classes. We're now in infrastructure and also some forms of direct investment, which at the time, before those mergers started, we weren't invested in. Of course, we've got more money to invest in Australian equities and overseas equities, so we have more managers in those sectors. The, I think the thing, by way of general observation, I think a successful merger clearly rests upon a complex web of discrete activities that have to come together on the right time and the right place for all interested parties. But really ultimately, in my view, I think that a successful merger really comes down to having trust, trust between the two trustees of the funds, of those two funds, and it also comes down to having the trust between the merged fund and also the members of that fund. So all parties go forward with a feeling of positiveness about the fact the merger has happened. If you can't build that trust in the lead-up to a merger and then through to the merged fund as it lives on, you've got some really serious issues to sort of work through. So it's important to be cognisant of that, I think, as you go through the process of planning for and implementing a merger. I've just spent some time briefly commenting on some of the specific areas that were referred to in the conference agenda. The first of those was really sort of talking about how you steer a clear path through the choppy waters of a volatile market, and just a couple of comments I have to make there are really that ultimately, these sorts of decisions around mergers are very much made for the long term, they're not short-term decisions, and so every decision that's taken really needs to be made in that context. So if there are volatile investment conditions at the time of a merger, well, you need to consider those conditions with a long-term view of where things will end up over that longer-term horizon. So I don't think short-term volatility should hold up or distract good long-term investment decisions. Another question that comes up is whether you transfer your investments in, you liquidate the investments of funds that are merging into yours or you transfer them in specie. So you need to work through those options and determine which is the right approach for your particular circumstances. In our case, we had a mix of different approaches, some funds, the assets were liquidated and it was quite simple, we just transferred the cash over, in other cases, the assets were transferred in specie, so changing the name of the, you know, unit holder rather than actually having to liquidate and transfer the cash. The other key decision, which has been touched on by the previous speakers, is really trying to really make that important decision about what's the equivalent investment option that you are going to give the members coming into your fund. So you may refer to your investment consultant to get some advice on that, you may have your own views as well on top of that, but ultimately, you make the decision about which is the right investment for those incoming members based on that advice. The other thing I think which is a very good thing about mergers is it gives the trustee a very, almost one-off opportunity to look at his investment strategy from a different perspective and to possibly take up investment opportunities that had not contemplated before. So it's very much a one-off opportunity to make a real big difference to how the investment strategy of a fund is formulated. The other aspect I think is also, funds need to be conscious post-merger of monitoring the level of investment switching that goes on. Keep on top of that, of course, sometimes through recent time, liquidity as well has been an issue, so it's certainly an area that's worth keeping on top of. The other area where there was an area to sort of cover today was the challenges and pitfalls of rationalising your investment portfolio. Transition management, there's lots of ably and very capably qualified transition management specialists out there who can help you through a process of getting assets from one place to another, not being out of the market and doing it at the lowest possible cost, so they clearly play a key role in that regard. The whole fact of managing the liaison between your investment managers, the custodian making sure the money ends up in the right place and the right way, that is also a fairly time-consuming challenge. And I guess, yeah, touching on that other point about it being a one-off opportunity, having a merger, there are also scope, I think, when you're rationalising investments and aggregating portfolios, that there may be scope, opportunities to go back to your managers and negotiate fee reductions, to the extent that may be out there. It's not an easy thing to do, of course, but it's certainly worth having a good go at it. The other area, the third and final area, was really how do you take your members through these changes and how do you retain them once you've actually affected the merger? I think the answer to that question stands with really building a brand, it comes back to that trust comment, building a brand that connects with the new merged membership and positions the merged fund for continued growth. If you have a strong brand, your members will stay with you for the fact that they associate with your brand and they believe in what your promise is in terms of what you will do for them. The merger itself, or a merger itself, provides a unique opportunity also to review all of the products and services of the fund and to actually lift the game, actually benchmark, sort of improve insurances, improve the range of services you offer. It encourages, I think, funds to actually challenge almost everything about what they do, and that must surely be a healthy process. Comment on the fact that also members really want to feel like they belong with the fund. If your fund projects a brand or an image that they don't really feel part of, then I guess over the longer term, they'll basically go elsewhere. So communication about the merger is really important, and you need to get across those key messages in very sort of bite-sized pieces that they connect with them very readily. And that inclusion is really the essence of what I thought I would say. Thank you.